Well, guess what? Delete them.
Yeah, delete.
Ignore.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, and welcome to the November seventeenth, twenty twenty-five Reagan meeting of the Weaverville Town Council. Thank you all for being here. Calling this meeting at order. Council members, you've had an opportunity to review tonight's agenda and your, in your agenda packet. Are there any adjustments or changes you made to the agenda? And if not, can I have a motion to approve the agenda as written?
I'll make a motion to approve.
Thank you very much. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you very much. It is important for any, any of us on the council to reveal any potential conflicts of interest we may have with any agenda items. Are there any one, or is there any council member who has any type of conflict with an agenda item this evening? Good news. We'll move on to our consent agenda. And Town Manager Harris, could you go through tonight's agenda or consent agenda items?
Yes, Sir Mayor, Council. Before we go through that, as you'll notice, going through your packet, we're doing something a little different now to line it up with our strategic plan. You'll notice where it has a strategic plan and goal tie-in, as well as a budget tie-in on that aspect. So you'll be seeing, seeing that as we move forward in that. Your first item on consent is October twenty-seventh, twenty-five is your Town Council regular meeting minutes for approval. Moving on to page seven is your monthly tax report, which shows eighteen percent of the town's property taxes been collected at the end of October. And that total is eight hundred and sixty-six thousand, sixty-five dollars and thirty-six cents out of the four million, eight hundred thousand, six hundred and ninety-three dollars and seventy-nine cents. Moving on to page twelve is a budget amendment. The Fire Department received a donation for one thousand dollars from Hendrick Industries, North Buckland Quarry on September twenty-fifth as a thank you on the one-year anniversary of the Hurricane Helene response and recovery efforts. The town has collected an additional six hundred and twenty-five dollars in the COPS for Kids donation during the October through November, bringing that fiscal year to date, one thousand, four hundred and fifty-eight dollars and thirty-one cent. For our ABC funds for the quarter ending in September thirtieth, the town has received three thousand, four hundred and twenty-two dollars and fifty-five cent for alcohol education and two thousand, four hundred and forty-four dollars and sixty-eight cent for law enforcement. On page fourteen, we have a, the water line acceptance for Encore Rims Creek for the Phase Two. The water infrastructure is now complete for the Phase Two, and the town is asked to accept those lines into the town's public water system. The easement plat that is attached shows an eight-inch water line that was constructed and the twenty-foot wide easement. The Public Works Director also urges council to set a water line repair authority at ten thousand to cover any defects that might be discovered within three years of our acceptance. Plan approval staff will be working with the, with the owner to get the necessary easement documents in place. Moving on to page sixteen is a Helene Recovery Plan adoption. Since April of twenty-five, we've been working with the county and municipal jurisdictions and FEMA representatives on the Helene Recovery Plan. That plan is now, in its final form, a Weaverville section plan as they attach. And for those looking at it online, there's a QR code, as well as a link that will address that. The plan specifically, Weaverville Section is ready for adoption and a resolution has been provided in your packet for that tonight. Moving on to page thirty-four, a Water Resiliency and Response Plan. In accordance with General Statutes one thirty-eight, three twenty, EQA requires the public water suppliers that operate a treatment plant and furnishing water from surface water, like the Alba River, to create and implement a source resort, Water Resilience and Response Plan, and that plan is, is attached in your packet as well. On page thirty-five is a road closure ordinance for a portion of Florida Avenue for the Candlelight Stroll. The WBA, Weaverville Business Association, is conducting their Candlelight Stroll this year on Friday, December twelfth. As mentioned previously, the town's portion of this is, we're looking at doing a winter wonderland on that section of Florida Avenue between Main Street and Merchant Alley. And so road closure ordinance is needed to close that portion of Florida during the event, and that is attached for your review. Moving on to page thirty-eight is a code amendment for the Comprehensive Land Use Plan that was updated in January. Calls for continuous review of the zoning regulations to ensure statutory requirements. The General Assembly, as you're aware, recently passed laws going into effect on October sixth that will require some code amendments to bring the town's land use development regulations into compliance. Note that the municipalities no longer have the authority to establish or require payment design standards for public roads or private roads that are more stringent than the minimum payment designs for DOT. We ask that you set, Town Councils ask to set a public hearing on the proposed tax amendments for December ninth of twenty twenty-five. Hearing Council Chambers at six o'clock addressing that matter. Moving on to page forty-six is a resolution that supports the MPO grant application for an update from our two thousand and fourteen Rims Creek Greenway feasibility study. The WEDAC Economic Development Committee came forward and has encouraged the town to move forward with seeking funding from the EPO, MPO feasibility study that was, and some initial work is done on that application. The application deadline is December thirty-first. One of the newer requirements for this type of grant is that the applicant must commit to paying twenty percent cash match as part of the application process. A resolution of support is also needed for this grant application, and one is attached for consideration incorporates the commitment that to require the cash match of twenty percent if the grant were to be awarded and accepted by the town. And that concludes your consent agenda.
Any questions regarding any of the items on the consent agenda?
What is the grant amount requested on that Rims Creek Greenway?
I'm not sure if we have an amount for it yet. But just to remind folks, we actually, we've already got this in place, but the feasibility plan we did is now ten years old. So this is to renew that. So, but, so we've, we've been, we've been reserving our twenty percent for ten years, I think.
Yes.
But I'm sure that ten, but I'm sure that amount will go up with the, with the new amount. It's bound to go up over ten years.
So what is different about this study than the one done ten years ago? I mean, I'm asking because I don't know.
Well, one thing, one thing, of course, is the hurricane would have changed a lot of the landscape where the original greenway was planned. And the, the original greenway required some land acquisition, which I'm sure the price of that land would have changed.
And also, Michelle, the, the guy who was over the MPO told me it costs a whole lot less to do it during the planning stage than it does during the design stage. So if we went with the original plan that's ten years old, and then they find problems, they have to stop everything and do redesign.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions on the consent agenda? If not, can I have a motion to approve tonight's consent agenda?
I'll make that.
Thank you all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you very much. Mr. Harris, would you go through your town manager's report?
Moving along on page forty-eight for your, for the manager report. As you're aware, I was out of pocket last week attending class for Leading Four Results at the School of Government, which I was awarded a scholarship to attend last year. They moved me to this year's cohort due to Hurricane Helene response. So Advent Health is hosting for the officials on November the eighteenth tomorrow, providing some updates on hospitals' progress there, and you'll be meeting on-site for that. I'll be unable to attend to that tomorrow. I'll be in a class on Human Resources Management tomorrow. The spruce tree at the clock lot, the town was awarded the Arbor Day Foundation charitable grant. Those monies received and town contracted to Davy Group to perform the tree surveys, the overall tree canopy, the health assessment in town-owned properties, and in the right of ways. The office, doing inspection, reported that the blue spruce located at, at that intersection at the clock lot has been infected, and their recommendation was to, was that it be removed. We've elected to, to continue with that, but it will not occur until the end of the holiday season. To be in compliance with the grant, it will be removed before the end of, end of the year, December thirty-first, but we will have it up for the holiday season. This year, as you'll hear a little bit later, one of the things we're doing different with the, with the tree is that we've engaged the schools and having the children there make some ornaments for the tree to go on there this year as well.
And I should point out also that, I know this is, the tree is kind of loved as a, as a town Christmas tree, but we actually received commitment for a donation of a new tree to replace it today, so.
Good to hear.
Excellent.
Veterans Day event was conducted on Tuesday, this past, on the eleventh. Appreciate Mr. Jackson and the Patriotic Committee for coordinating that. Major General Gilbeck, retired US Army Ranger, was our keynote speaker, providing that information there. The Main Street Nature Park on the town has secured an additional thirty-five thousand in grant funding for design elements of the stormwater and streambank stabilization project in the nature park through the generosity of the Pigeon Falls River Fund that is administered through the community foundation. The grant for this project to date totals two hundred and fifteen thousand on a project that is estimated at approximately three hundred and sixty thousand. Land of Sky Regional Council has been instrumental in helping us secure these monies and hope to secure more monies in the spring of twenty-six. Financial system upgrade. Our town hall is currently upgrading our new accounting software. We are scheduled to go live in the new system this week with support on-site. Be patient with our staff for the next few weeks, as it may take some time to get fully comfortable navigating and using the new system. Those upgrades, updating the look of the water bills, effective with the January thirty-first, twenty-six billing cycle. Any customers who receive e-statements through South Data will need to set up a new account with our, our MyGovHub portal, which directly integrates with our accounting software. We would, we would discontinue utilizing South Data for printing email of the bills effective January first of twenty-six. The MyGovHub portal can be found on our website by navigating through the section to pay town bills online. And if any of the consumers have any questions, they can call staff up front, and they'll be glad to assist them.
I have a question. Those customers who do not receive e-bills, will they still get bills in the mail?
That I will find out for sure if we're still doing that aspect, but I believe we are.
Will still get bills in the mail?
Yes.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am, thank you. For our holiday season events, the decorating of the spruce tree clock. As I mentioned, this year, we'll be doing, the town will be taking on that work, where we've had contracted it out previously. The work is expected to be conducted during December first. So while the town has, has acquired equipment to hang the snowflakes, we will be decorating the, the tree at that point in conjunction with our primary elementary school, providing some ornaments for that decoration process. These will be placed on the, as decorative garland in order to incorporate our school and families into the holiday events sponsored by the, the WBA that Weaverville Business Association and the town. The Holiday Parade will be held on Saturday, December sixth, at eleven AM. Councilmember Jackson will be our grand marshal for that. So we will be participating in the WBA's Candlelight Stroll on Friday, December the twelfth, again, with a portion of Florida Avenue closed to facilitate some holiday activities with our Winter Wonderland Project. We'll have some hot chocolate photo opportunities with Santa's sleigh at a mobile bookstore, an area for some tables and chairs and heaters for people to gather during that environment and make it a family-friendly environment for the evening. Give you an update on the I-26 bridge construction, an area that continues and is resulting in some limited interstate shutdowns. When this happens, a great deal of traffic is shifted to our downtown area streets. We will need to have patients to take extra care and driving with the scurrs in order to minimize the risk of accidents. They have assured us, though, that their direction does, is just as quick as trying to reroute through traffic. However, I have not gone out there with a time study to see in that, but they did assure us that if people will be patient setting in that traffic, instead of cutting through town, it does save time by setting there versus them trying to reroute through traffic itself. A temporary food pantry has been established with the beloved Ashville has placed a temporary food pantry at the clock lot in order to provide food resources to those in need during this time when the benefits were disrupted. This food pantry is monitored by the volunteers. Many who live in Weaverville and donations are not accepted at the food pantry this time, but they're doing a good job of keeping an eye on that, to keep it stocked. Fire Department received word this past week that they, we have been awarded a fifty thousand dollar grant from the Office of State Fire Marshal for Helene's Disaster Recovery Program. One of the focuses of council has directed staff to try to research and obtain as many grants as possible, and so that's been pushed out to our department heads to pursue more grant opportunity funding, especially for non-matching grants. And that is a non-matching grant on that aspect. So upcoming events and holidays for the Thanksgiving holiday, town offices will be closed the twenty-seventh, the twenty-eighth of November. Our Holiday Parade, again, is at eleven AM on December sixth. We have, registration for that closes today. For December twelfth, the Candlelight Stroll and the Winter Wonderland at six PM. And on December ninth, your council workshop meeting at six PM here in the chambers. And then on fifteenth, the fifteenth of December, our Town Council Regular Meeting and organizational meeting, which will be swearing in our newly elected officials, December twenty-fourth through the twenty-sixth. Town offices will be closed, as well as January first, for the New Year Day, town offices will be closed. That concludes your manager report, sir.
Thank you. Anyone have any questions for the manager? There you go, we'll move on. Next item is item six on your agenda, which is our general public comments. And we do have some folks who wish to speak this evening. When I call your name, if you will come to the podium, if you would state your name and your address, you'll have three minutes to speak, and if you go beyond your three minutes, the manager has this very annoying alarm which will go off. And I encourage everyone to, to be polite. First up is Sylvia Landis.
Hi. This fall, prior to voting, I was reading the statements of the candidates, and they were talking about the growth for the area and that it's expected to double and the importance of the hospital. And about that time, I took a full foliage drive and was driving up to Boone through Yancee and Mitchell Counties. And I saw these signs talking about certified entrepreneurial communities. And I wondered, what is that? So I looked it up, particularly since I'm interested in being an entrepreneur myself. And what it is, it's a certification where the community commits resources, policies, and culture to support new and existing businesses. The best models that are out there look at an integrated model where it basically teaches entrepreneurial skills from elementary school up through seniors. We all know the prompt, or give a man a fish and you feed him a day. Teach a man to fish and you feed him for a lifetime. I believe that committing to becoming a certified entrepreneurial community could support the unlimited creativity and, and potential in our community. One of the things, and I think in terms of being competitive, that it's necessary to, to invest in human resources. Looking at some of the things that people are doing, it's basically they're providing tools in public spaces for people's creativity, things like podcasting, laser engravers, video equipment, music machines, circuit board, et cetera. I, I know, having worked in government, that you have questions about how, how do you pay for this stuff? And I think what it is, is a combination of grants, business commitment, using the resources of the library. For example, when I looked at the library resources, a lot of them are there already, but you'd need to reformat the webpages to make it clear what kind of career resources are already in existence. I don't want to overemphasize technology because I think there's a dark side personally to technology. But I also find as a citizen that we need to teach the tools for handling the dark side. So for example, today I found myself struggling with some particular things. So anyway, I hope you like that idea.
That's a very good idea, and in fact, we do, the Economic Development Committee has been working on several different projects the last couple of years to promote entrepreneurship. So is Phil Barnett in the crowd?
Yes.
Phil, he's the letterhead of our Economic Development Committee. I'm going to ask him if he wants to check into this and bring it up at their meeting next week. Thank you for your idea. Next up is Janice Weaver.
I'm Janice Weaver, but I live on East Street, and I will give my three minutes to my husband first.
Hello, how are you? Good to see you all again. Two years ago, I was approached to come before the Town Council to give the history of our black community. I was a little hesitant in doing that because I didn't think it'd be fair to my ancestors, ten minutes to give my history. That ain't going to work for me. You know, there's too much there, too much going on, but we made it through. And during that presentation, I made a statement that, we talked about our community center and our church and then all the families, and that we're in the process of raising monies and doing things of that nature to preserve our history, our black history. This day and time when our history is being ripped from the books, ripped from, just destroyed, I think it's so important that we take it upon ourselves to save our history, to teach our history to our children, so that's what we're doing. Through that conversation that I had with you all, I may comment that if anyone wants to truly, truly, or were truly interested in our history, the black community here. I'm seventy-six years old. My daddy bought property here in nineteen fifty-three. He bought seven acres off of East Street. I'm seventy-six years old. My house is built on the tail end of that property now. So I know my history. I know what we've gone through in this town. I know the obstacles that we have endured. We went through a time when they tried to take our building, the old Weaverville Colored School on Hillside Street, the school that my mom went to school in, where my aunts and uncles went to school there. We've raised money. We've been in the process of raising money. The rehab started last week. We're working on that building. We have great plans for that building. Again, during that conversation, I made the comment that if anyone come up to my house in my driveway, get my address. This, this is my address, you're welcome anytime. The next day, I was out in the yard doing something, and I see a little car come to my driveway, and I said, who is this? So I waved, and the young lady stepped out. Town, Council Lady Michelle Wood. She came up, we sat on the swing in the yard, my wife came out, and we sat there and talked. And she was, what impressed me with you was how you approached me. The comment was, I hope I'm not overstepping my boundaries by coming here to talk with you. But I heard what you said about your building and your history. And with. And I would like to go over with you and understand what you're trying to do, and maybe I can help you somehow. So that's when our friendship began. We were in the process of knocking on doors and, and looking for people and looking for ways to help us get that building up to par. I can say now that because of this young lady right here, knowing which avenue, which street, which corner, which tree looked at him, we found someone that helped us write a grant. It was success through the Dogwood Foundation, through Buckland County, plus all the money that was raised and given to us by members of this community. There were so many people that came to that building and didn't know what it was. Asked, what, what is this? I says, the school where my mom went to school. I've been here all my life, never knew what it was. It was a Rosa-Rose School, it was a colored school, where we weren't allowed to go to school because being black. My mom went to school there, all my, my, my aunts and uncles went to school there. So that's what it is. And I'll open those doors again. We're working on the building. Anybody's welcome to get in touch with any of us, and we will gladly sit down and talk to you. Because we're going, we're going to have our history. Nobody can take our history. Don't let, don't, don't fool, don't let anybody fool you there. We're going to have our history. You know, I, that's, that's the end of that right there. But I want to thank you all, and Michelle, you've been so, so good with us and helped us so much that we have a, we have a presentation for you, and I'm going to let Norm read. If you could.
Come on, please.
Can we hand you this? It's a letter. There was a crystal that's not here, and that's because of me, because of my medical problems I'm going through. I didn't get all that done. But there's something else that goes with this. We're going to give you this right now.
In honor of Councilwoman Michelle Wood, on behalf of Hillside Community, we extend our deepest gratitude, Councilwoman Michelle Wood, for her unwavering commitment, compassion, and tireless advocacy. Your leadership has made a lasting impact on our families, our history, and the future we are building together. Your support of the Weaverville Colored School and the Hillside Community Center has been nothing short of transformative. You have stood with us and preserved our heritage, uplifted our voices, ensured that the stories, struggles, and achievements of our community are honored and remembered. Through your dedication, these spaces continue to serve as a powerful pillar of hope, unity, and opportunity for generations to come. Your presence has always brought encouragement, your guidance has opened doors, and your genuine care of the people of Hillside has shown us what the true public service looks like. Today, we celebrate you, not just for what you have done, but for you are, a champion of the community, a listener, a bridge builder, a friend. Your legacy will remain woven in the hearts of Hillside, and we are forever grateful. Thank you, Councilwoman Wood, for your service, your heart, and your vision. You will always have a place here and a family in the Hillside Community, November the eighteenth, two thousand and twenty-five.
And to add on to that, in our building, we will have storyboards that's going to put a timeline down to where, where our folk came and where they are now. And you have a plus on that wall. I'll show you that. You have a plus on that wall. We're going to do that. And also, did I mention that our building has been classified downstairs from Buckland County through the Preservation Society? It's a historical building now, so we've got that done with the help of this young lady right here. And there's a lot of folk that we're going to recognize, but not at this particular time. When our building is done to the point that we, it's going to take some years to do what we're doing, we're doing it in phases, but when that time comes, we're going to open it up for you and let you come and, and visit and settle with us. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you all. Congratulations, Councilwoman Wood, and thank you for your initiative and all your hard work. Chip Lambert?
Good evening. I come tonight just with some general concerns regarding the, what we're going to be talking about next on the annexation or proposed annexation of the property located at Ten Silverwood Farm Road. Just in general, and this may be more directed at the people that we're proposing to develop that site, is that I just feel like there's not a really good, concise, direct way to disseminate the information that's, that's coming out to the neighbors. Me and my wife's property abuts, this is a property, and we received a letter a few months ago that said they were going to have a Zoom meeting. They, they said more information will be coming in the coming weeks before the proposed Zoom internet meeting. The Zoom internet meeting was five days later, so certainly there was not several weeks, as the letter said. The Zoom internet meeting was five days later, so certainly there was not several weeks, as the letter said, and that was it. We never had any other invitation to Zoom meeting, never received another letter regarding that. My second concern is that so far I've seen no schematics, no drawings, nothing to really tell me other than how many proposed structures there are, but there are no, there's no information about lines, sewage, drawings, how they would deal with the Flat Creek area, which is where our property is. I say that just as a preface and as a warm-up to the discussion that's coming up in the coming minutes. Thanks.
Thank you. Pamela McCurry.
Hi, Pamela McCurry. I'm at Forty Gray Farm Road, which is right up at Clark's Chapel. So same thing, simple reforms. Our property is right behind, so we're on the ridge. So all of my family, we have twelve acres there, family land, everybody's there. I think we're gonna be affected the most just because we're all on the line. When the letter first came out, we were told a hundred and fifty-six units. So I got the Weaverville packet. Now I realize that it's gone to three to possibly four hundred units of just apartments and from a hundred and fifteen to possibly a hundred and eighty for single-family homes. So that's a lot more than what we were notified in that first letter of the hundred and fifty-six. So it just seems to be increasing each time we get, and actually, all of my information is coming from the town of Weaverville. Like he stated, we're not really getting anything yet. I did email Landon Cox, and he did email me back, but they're not ready to send me what they have just yet. So I'm waiting on that. So I do thank you for emailing me back. I have a lot of concerns. I mean, I've lived there my whole life. I just think, I think it's too much for the area that we're in. I'm not crazy about apartments to begin with. I wouldn't mind the single-family homes. I think they'd have the same values as what we do, wanting to protect our property and keep the crime rate down. I know with bigger population, there comes more crime. I mean, that's just common sense. And I read the letters from the police department and the fire department that was in the packet, and I do agree. But I think, I think they're understated as far as what population is gonna be coming from these apartments. And I have concerns even with the Northridge Farm that's going in behind Hobby Lobby. And I did notice in your packet that you stated that Weaverville's population, you know, we've took, what, the fifty-one-hundred mark for Weaverville's population? When all of these apartment complexes are completed, does anyone have any idea where we would be at that point as far as population? When they're up and running, I guess?
It's projected to double in the next two or three years.
Right. So there are times now to me, Weaverville's congested now. It's, it's hard to get through. My mom passed away in September, so I had to go down to West Funeral Home Friday to pay a bill for her. Of course, you had construction and things going up here on Main Street, but I thought I could still turn south to get down to West Funeral Home. Couldn't do that, so I ended up turning into Truist Bank, going back out. And I thought, well, I'll just hit New Stock and go to West and come back up. When I got to New Stock Exit, of course, everybody else had the same idea. So it was lined up two at a time, and I'm sitting there just waiting my turn, and here's sirens. And I'm thinking, I hope they're going, being, they're saying going to, going toward Ashwell. They weren't. It was Weaverville. They were trying to get off on the ramp, which was, we were packed. And luckily, we each had enough room, you know, to kind of divide the waters to let the fire department to come through. But then they were gonna have to turn left to try to go down through the rest. So I've got a lot of concerns with the traffic and the crowd that could be coming with all of these apartment complexes. Thank you.
Thank you. Keith McCurry.
Yes. Well, thank you for allowing me to speak here this evening. It is still on the same subject of Ten Silverwood Farm Road, and I want to voice my concerns. I spoke last, in the last meeting, and I asked for the environmental and the geological studies. Would like to see them, if those are gonna be done. Maybe they can answer this tonight. Also, as my wife stated, the footprint of this has increased since we got our letters. From the hundred and fifty-six to now, according to the packet and according to the application for the water, it's up to five hundred and eighty-eight units now. And if you look on over in your packet, it is a proposed future of nine hundred and fifty-seven units on this property. That's in your information that you have. And I have a concern of that. This footprint that's gonna be there, again, what is it gonna do to our water table of our surrounding properties, of our wells? If this grading takes place, or if this footprint of these buildings, asphalt, just the footprint of the building, the asphalt, the sidewalks, driveways, all of that, what is this gonna do to our groundwater and our well water? We have seven wells right there on top of that hill. I own two of those wells. I mentioned that in the last meeting. What are we gonna do when our wells start having problems? What is our recourse that we are gonna have? And not only that, it goes back to, to the water as far as y'all are concerned. All of these homes and these apartments being built, can y'all even handle this water load that's gonna be put on y'all? What are y'all stipulations of, and regulations that you have to follow to be able to supply this water to these people? This is a lot of, lot of buildings that's fixing to take place. What is that? And this, what is, I wanna know what the detriment is gonna be to these surrounding properties? That's part of your land use plan that you have. What is it gonna be, the detriment to the surrounding properties and the neighborhood that we have? And I did speak with Samuel down at the, at the planning department at MSD today. He told me the plans of what proposed plans is for the sewer that's coming in. And I asked him if the landowners do not give the right-of-ways for this sewer, what is going to take place? And he told me imminent domain will take place to put this sewer in. Now, is, what, what is the rest of us are gonna do if these people need right-of-ways? They only have one interest to this thing down off of Old Mars Hill Highway. How are you gonna funnel a proposed future of nine hundred and fifty-seven units? That's two cars per people. That's, that's eighteen, nineteen hundred cars you're gonna be looking at. Funnel out down there off of Old Mars Hill Highway. Or is there gonna be another entrance, and is somebody else gonna lose their property by a, someone needing a right-of-way? I think these are questions that need to be answered and need to be answered by the developer, because I think these developers are profiting off the backs of the landowners in this area. Thank you.
Thank you. Brian Witt.
To respect the request of, I think, for people to speak on the subject, I'll use my phone.
Alright, thank you very much. Thank you all for your opinions this evening. I appreciate, appreciate this. Now we'll run on to the discussion action for this evening, and I may is the annexing zoning and water request for Ten Silverwood Farm Road. Manja Harris, what can you, what light can you shed on this matter?
Voluntary annexation position seeking to approximately a hundred and seven acres located at Ten Silverwood Farms, annexed into the town of Weaverville has been submitted. The purpose of their annexation appears to be obtain town services, including water to support an apartment complex, single-family residential unit lots, and ten-plus acres of commercial property. At your council meeting on September twenty-second, the clerk was directed to investigate the sufficiency of the annexation position. Ms. Mercer has done so and has found that the position is sufficient. The petitioners requested R-12, R-3, and C-2 traditional zoning, and the planning board recommendation was favorable as to the proposed district shown on the map attached to their recommendation letter. The town received a water commitment request on this property on November fifth. That paper, that information has been last after your seat tonight by Public Works Director. And the town council findings on that. Several staff reports are provided for the council. I mean, information regarding the packets for tonight. The staff applicant is here, if you would like to hear from them for any questions regarding that, if you would like to hear from them.
I'm pretty sure we probably do. Could you all introduce yourselves?
Sure.
Excuse me, Mr. Mayor, I'd just like to put into the record there were no online submissions received.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm Bo Carpenter, attorney with Allen Stoll Kilborn. I represent LDG Development, which is the developer in this project. I'm here with Landon Cox, who is the primary contact with the developer, here to answer any questions you guys might have. Just to address a couple of the concerns we heard. First of all, we, we hear you. We tend to follow up with you. We had one neighborhood meeting a couple of months ago, which we scheduled and had. We were planning on another one before the public hearing. It will hopefully be set up on December ninth. So we're interested in engaging with, with the public in this matter. This is a project that is going forward in one way or the other. We'd love for it to be with the town. There is a affordable housing aspect to it. Approximately one-third of it will be affordable housing. It's much-needed housing considering the expansion that's happening up here with Advent Health and, and the, and the flow level Weaverville is happening right now. The, the reports did, did reference a higher impact than perhaps what is planned for the property. And Mr. Cox will speak more about that. But it's not gonna be as intense as, as, as it stated in those reports. And so something else we can speak to tonight is the intensity and what's, what's planned for it. But in general, this is a good project for the, for the town. We believe it's much-needed affordable housing and workforce housing to go along with what the Advent Health coming in and otherwise, we hope it's something the, the town will consider for annexation or water credits. And asked tonight, it's really to put off a public hearing on December ninth for consideration by, by either this council or the following council. But public hearing on December ninth is the request purposes of tonight.
Mr. Cox, I suspect there's been, there's been a lot of change about this project over the past few months. Could you give us an update? What, what exactly is the scope of the project and, as it exists today?
Hi, good evening. Excuse me. Well, honestly, there, there haven't been that many changes. So I, just in regard to the dissemination of information, it's true that when we met on, in October, that I, I said that I was gonna circulate the, the site plan for the project, and I still am going to do that. Our, our engineers have been slower to get new plans into my hands, is the only reason I've not been able to send those around. I ha, I do have an initial site plan that I'm happy to send to folks with the caveat that it doesn't represent what the community's gonna look like. It was a first-pass site plan that is intended really to see what's possible on a site, and then it's pared down. So, so that's the only reason I haven't sent that around. But we, I did, as of last Friday, receive the, the initial site plan for the, the affordable housing community component of it, which is our, our primary driver here. And, and I told Ms. McCurry I was gonna send that to her once, once a couple of updates have been put into it. So we're gonna send that around. But the, the, the number of units that were in the water allocation were really kind of based on advice that we were given to put forward the, the most possible usage that we could imagine on the property, and then it could be pared down from there. Better to overestimate than underestimate. And so those numbers were based on that theoretical max, maximum that we could put on the site. So the, we don't at all expect to, as many units that are on there. It's, it's still in the neighborhood of what, what we talked about to now. In the end, which I think would be around a hundred and thirty, single-family detached units and probably around three hundred apartment units at the end of the day.
So the affordable housing portion is, would be the apartment, correct?
Only a portion of those. So of, of the, the affordable community, we just learned last Friday, is gonna be a hundred and sixty-eight units. And then the balance of that three hundred would be a workforce, which I'm not calling affordable, but it would be, have income restrictions, a hundred and twenty percent AMI and below is what we're thinking.
But that would be the apartments?
Those would be apartments, yeah.
So the apartment complex would be all workforce or cheap?
That's right.
Ladies and gentlemen, I'm sure you probably have lots of questions for Mr. Cox. What questions do you have about this project?
I have lots of questions. I mean, we're dealing with, I feel like we're just totally dealing with information that's not accurate. I mean, it's kind of like you take a snow globe and shake it, and then whatever falls down, we don't really know the answer. Because, you know, we read three or four hundred here and possibly a hundred and fifteen to a hundred and thirty houses, and then you put in application for sewer for the maximum amount of close to a thousand. And, you know, part of me wants to say, let's table this until you know what you really want to do.
Yeah.
But the other part of me says, the other part of me says, how can this be good for the town? You know, I mean, if it takes up, from what I read, from when the town reports come out, and they say, if we do this and this and this, it's possible that we're gonna have to add another company of fire people. And my question is, how many is on a company? Five, six?
Three to four, minimum of three staff.
Okay, so a minimum of three is a company. And so we say that's three hundred thousand dollars or more if you add benefits and 401K. And then we say two possible police officers. We're looking at another two hundred thousand plus cars, maybe. So now we're up to, we're say at three, four, five, six, seven. We're at about seven hundred thousand dollars of employees that we need to add to our town, but we're not adding except the minimum amount of taxes here. So it's hard to say it's good for the town. It could be good for the community. It could be good for the county. It could be good for you. It could be good for the hospital. But it's gonna be hard to be good for the town because the town doesn't magically come up with money. It's the people who live in the town that magically help come up with money.
And Councilman Corde, just for clarification on that, three per company, you would still need three shifts to cover that, so?
So that's nine?
Nine, working at twenty-four.
Okay, so we're over a million dollars to make this happen. Thank you for answering that.
Yes, ma'am.
It's very difficult for me to, my snow globe is, is real fuzzy.
Yeah. So you're right to think that there's a lot that's up in the air about the, the single-family homes and the workforce, and that's always been true. The, the, the reason that we're, we're trying to come through so quickly has to do with the financing for the affordable housing component of this, and I don't know if this is a satisfactory answer or not, but in order to move forward and, and qualify for, for the financing that we need, we need to be able to show that we're entitled for, for the development of what we're, we're proposing. And because those are happening at the beginning of the year, it means that we, we are needing to move forward, really specifically, that the, what will only be about twenty acres of this and the end of this, and so the tax credit component of this. And, you know, we've offered to, to leave out some of the other stuff because it is so undetermined at this point. But, you know, the feedback I've received is no, keep it all together and try it all at once. That's where we are.
I think, I think the councilors probably have difficulty trying to make decisions with regard to zoning, for example, if we don't have a site plan, you know, and we have some ambiguity about the number of units. So it would be hard, I think, for councilors to decide what, how to zone you if we didn't have a site plan, when at this point we don't have that yet. And when do you think that we might be able to see those?
I could provide the, the version of it that I mentioned before. It does represent the, the number of, of the single-family homes that I talked about. There will be more apartment buildings on there than we anticipate. So if you can be imaginative and ignore some of those, then I, I think it would give you a good sense of what, what we expect the project to be. You know, when we're thinking about how to, to allocate the resources that we have for the, for the engineering, because the tax credit, the affordable part of it, is so pressing, it's, there's a lot of work to be done before applications go in. It's difficult to divert resources from the engineering firm to look at the single-family home stuff and the workforce component of it when we really need their attention on, on the affordable part of it to get that through. So that, that's, and it's extremely expensive to, to take everything else into account.
And when we had talked before, the affordable housing component, the apartments, would be a, under a nonprofit status, is that correct?
That's right.
So there's no taxing for the town, so that, so that does represent an expense for us with no income, so?
That's right, for the, for the affordable housing.
But the other portions, the non-apartment portions, would be presumably a for-tax corporation?
That's right.
I mean, for profit, excuse me.
Yeah, and then the commercial uses would be as well.
When will the affordable housing on Monticello that we've already approved, when do you think it'll be complete for people to move into?
Good question. We expect folks will start to be able to move in in May, this coming May.
This coming May?
Yeah, so that the, the clubhouse building will be the first to complete. I think that's, will be complete in March. The first residential building will be in May, and then I, I think it, it will lease up through maybe October, September, October, next year.
Because it would also be good if we could see something that you have done in our community that we've already approved for you to do in our community. community that we've already approved for you to do in our community.
Yeah, I understand that, yeah. Yeah, they're moving ahead of schedule for whatever that's worth. And I turned that off before this meeting started, sorry about that. We wish they were done sooner as well, so, yeah, that's when it'll be.
I have a couple of concerns, one which I don't believe has been brought up yet, and that is the fact that our satellite annexation property, this is going to take us to where we only have left, less than 1% that we have. This is going to basically shut out any other developments of any magnitude at all. So, that is a big concern of mine. Also, from the numbers we have right now, I can't see the taxpayers underwriting and supporting the development of something like this at a cost to the taxpayers in this town. So, the numbers just are very disturbing, and also, the land part that you're proposing there will take away, basically, we won't be able to do any satellite annexation. It's been brought up that possibly it could be changed, but we can't deal with possibilities. We have to need facts.
Another reason that we'd offer to leave out portions of the land, but again, we've been advised that wouldn't really, to keep it together, so that's why we did it.
So, does annexation of the affordable housing section, is that important in terms of getting your financing?
Yes, yeah.
And could it just be 20 acres?
It could be, yes, whatever the approximate acreage of that is, that would be helpful.
So, overall, are you asking for annexation of 20 acres or 107?
We're asking for the 107 was, is the request, and as I say, that was largely kind of based on feedback that we received, but we...
So, I'm just curious as to why, if your financiers would want, would require annexation, or do they just require to know that they got sewer and water?
It, well, it's around showing that the property itself is entitled for its intended use, and that's important to show on the applications for funding because it shows that it's, you know, there's some priorities given to projects that are shovel-ready or, you know, close to shovel-ready. And so, a big box that you check there is, do you have the entitlements you need to actually construct, construct the community?
So, it could be that if you could demonstrate that you had sewer and water available, that that would be sufficient to, for your application for the tax credits?
I'm sorry, could you say?
It could be that if you lacked annexation, but you did, you could demonstrate that you had sewer and water availability, that that would be sufficient for your application for tax?
Sewer and water availability are important, but the entitlement, when I say entitlement, I mean that it's properly zoned for its intended use, yeah.
Have you been talking with the county about the possibility of working directly with them, since it's a currently county property?
Not formally, but we just completed a rezoning, a special-use permit, which is what this would need through the county last week for a different project, so I'm familiar with the process.
Yeah, I would say a site plan would help us kind of visualize what is proposed, especially on the 20 acres.
Site plan, perhaps an economic feasibility study. I mean, this is just, the numbers are just not really coming together for me. You know, I would reiterate Catherine and Doug's point that, and I'm equally concerned that if we commit this amount of landmass to the satellite jurisdiction, and something more economically feasible comes along a year from now, we can't do it. Write your congressman, but this is not presently something that I really feel that you can fully back. But a site plan would be helpful. Writing the right amount of numbers is going to be helpful because we, to Catherine's point, have a prospect of a million dollars of taxpayer money going behind this, and we're not going to get Section 8 subsidies or anything through HUD to subsidize the taking on a nonprofit, correct? There's no government subsidy behind this.
No, there is. There are, it's not a Section 8 property, I should make that clear. But, no, I mean, there's a lot of government funding that goes into this, that most of the community is paid for using federal tax credits and housing bonds, which are issued through state government.
But we don't get any of that.
No, you don't get that, no.
No, that's my point.
Well, you said that they're federal subsidies to this project.
Yeah.
Yeah, not that you all, but there are to us. But, I mean, potentially it could be, I don't know, what the CDVGDR funding?
Is there a deadline for the CDVGDR funding?
Well, you know, we've been waiting over a year for them to release their funding application.
Which is up the feds.
Every month, and it's supposed to come out that month, so I think that they're very close now, but there will be deadlines. It'll be probably, I don't know, I'm guessing 60 days from whenever it's released, you have to send it in.
Any other questions or concerns?
I would also, you know, if you want to continue to pursue this, even though I don't really see how we could possibly do it, but if you were going to continue it, I think you ought to do that water table search, too, for the people who are going to live around that area.
Yeah, yeah, I'm glad to wrap that back up. So, I've been advised by more than one engineering firm that there should be no concern about the water table and well water. We could look into it deeper if we had some information on the specific wells that are of concern, but my understanding is, since we know about it, and it was also asked about geotechnical reports, since we only just found out where, actually, they're working on where the buildings are placed, so that's the step that we need to know before we can have a geotechnical performed. But when it does happen, now that we know of this concern, we can alert the folks that would be performing that task to look specifically and report back to us specifically on the subsurface conditions that would maybe impact those, and then they can adapt our site grading plan to mitigate any concerns about impacts on those. But off the cuff, the initial feedback I've got is that it's a very low likelihood that there's any kind of issues that could come from that, but we've been looking into them.
In the absence of the site plan, you probably can't answer this either, Mr. Cox, but is it true that the current plans, as you know them, would have all this, would there be a single ingress and egress to this property?
I think there would probably need to be more than one, and until we receive back the results of a traffic analysis, and have had more discussions with DOT, it's hard to say, but we've engaged, we're receiving scopes of service from traffic engineers right now to perform the traffic study.
I'm concerned about the cost of things like additional fire trucks and police cars and the maintenance and all that goes along with that. It's going to head something that the taxpayers would have to shoulder as well. So, I think we'd really have to get a handle on exactly what we need to put there. To Catherine's statement, I agree with what you're saying, so I appreciate that very much.
Anything else? Is there any?
I was just going to say that we need a lot of information. We're dealing with things that's unknown. If I had to make a decision tonight from my perspective, I couldn't support this being an extended attempt because it doesn't add up from several standpoint. We've got so many negatives against it. We just need more information, but then, there's other things like the satellite acreage and other things, it's just, doesn't look good to me.
Is that generally the feeling of the council in general, not, heading out to work? Can I make an assumption that council is saying that they don't want to take action tonight until we have more information, including a site plan and some more specificity with regards to numbers? Is that accurate?
Yes.
I just want to add to that, that it sounds like you have a pretty tight deadline with a portion of this, and as a council, we can't, we can't be rushed into making this decision because it's a big one.
Sure. If I could just say a couple of things. First of all, I think my client's been a pretty good partner of Weaverville for the other projects, so hopefully that gives some kind of comfort to the board that he's a good actor here.
And I would want to say that we've had, that the town's had a very positive relationship with LDG in the past, and we look forward to working in the future, which shows that there's too much ambiguity tonight.
That's my second point, is you guys need some more information. That's very clear, we hear you on that. I would suggest, if you're comfortable doing so, still set it for public hearing on December ninth, and we'll come with that information before then, and if it's not there, then it's not there. But for purposes of tonight, because there is a tight timeline, I think the request would be go and set it for December ninth, and if we don't have the information to you guys by then, then you have a lot of reasons to criticize us and turn the project down. But I think the ask for tonight is go ahead and set it, and we'll work hard on everything we've heard, knowing from you, but from the gallery here, from the people who are from the neighbors, and allow some time to work on that, solidify that. As I was going to say, we've got the site plan on, last Friday, so we start sharing that, and start having those conversations with staff, with you individually, with what have you. But if you could put an offer on December ninth for the public hearing to keep us on track, that would be what we're asking for tonight.
How do you all feel?
We're not going to come up with a million dollars. That's the thing. We're not going to be able to come up with all the extra employees, and it's a struggle.
Well, the council member, Robert, made a good point, is that you guys need some numbers here, you know, what are you getting in taxes versus what you're paying out payroll? And I think there might be some information we can give you on that. I think the workforce housing, for example, I think that is taxable, and so, we could, we can work on some numbers for you so you're not paying a million dollars out of taxpayer funds, or at least have the information available.
Well, I just, I don't know that there'd be much, I mean, you all know better than I how these budgets come together. You know, there is something in the annuals paperwork about projections, you know, the units, I don't mean to disagree here, but, not to disagree, but I just want to be realistic about what we, I mean, what I'm going to send you all is what I've told you right now out loud, what, you know, we're expecting in terms of the units, and that's not going to change. I could definitely give you the site plan, but the law, the, I defer, I guess, maybe to you all, just with the caveat that it is important for us to find out.
Mr. Bar, you got something?
Yeah, I'm just trying to do the math in my head, as far as a public hearing on December ninth, which would be our next scheduled meeting, our workshop, and the public hearing is to give the public the opportunity to speak, and they have to be able to speak with knowledge, right? They need to be educated on what they, what's going on, so how is it that we can get that information and disseminate it to the public so that they can actually be heard and take that podium and say, yes, I'm okay with this, or no, I'm not? How can we do that? How are we going to logistically do that?
I think it's on us to provide that information.
But to whom and through what channel?
The channels are already open with respect to the neighbors, you know, we haven't gotten information. We had, we had a neighborhood meeting voluntarily, and that was a month ago, and we understand there's a lack of information on their part. We were just getting some information ourselves, and so, we just got the site plan on Friday. We can share that.
And, sorry, I think one thing we've done, it might be true that the mailer that went out was a little bit fumbled, but there were people that showed up, but I've called every neighbor that's around the property.
No, no, no.
If I, if I haven't, then, oh, I've attempted, if I haven't, it's just because your information's on.
Give Mr. Cox your phone number.
Yeah, well, truly, I mean, and I've encouraged the folks that we have talked to to give my information to everybody. I mean, I'm as accessible, there is no higher priority to me, and I mean this genuinely, than the folks behind me and the folks that live over there, and you can ask the folks next to the Maryville project, the same is true. I answer their phone call, visit them still now, and talk to them. So, I'm dedicated to working with the neighbors, and that's true, and I'm sorry if we haven't been able to connect, but it's not because I don't want to connect.
Sure. Is there any desire on the council to set a plug in prior to getting the information right of course?
I think we should let Jennifer...
So, to your question, we do have an application, and I think what is, what is different about this one is this is a big project that's got a lot of different components to it, and you are normally used to seeing a site-specific plan under a conditional district zoning format. The developer has chosen to go a traditional route with R3 on the single-family portion, R12 on the apartment complex, and then the roughly 10 acres of commercial. And so, right now, the application before you is traditional zoning, annexation with traditional zoning. So, no offense to these guys, the site plan that they're talking about, that's what, that's what they, they're saying that they're going to do, but the actual application that we have is setting that aside completely and looking at the zoning, whether the zoning is appropriate, traditional zoning is appropriate, and looking at your growth area resolutions that y'all have worked on in the past, and what do y'all anticipate? Is their zoning plan, does that seem consistent? And so, that is what, that's what your public hearing would be on. It's not really, the developers can come with their site plan and say, this is what we intend to do, but the site, the actual public hearing is not on that site plan. It's on the traditional zoning that they have laid out, and it's in your packet that has been reviewed by your planning, your planning board.
So, Mr. Cox, why, why did you not pursue a conditional zoning district?
Because of the time, timing, and related to that, you know, we mentioned that the site plans are hard to pull together, and, you know, they're only now available to me, and that would just be the beginning of that conditional zoning discussion, you know, if that was required. And we did it with Maryville, and it was 11 months, I think, to get through that. And we don't, we don't have 11 months, so.
So, is it not true that zoning goes with the property if the site plan changes? So, we're not sure how to zone this yet, are we?
I don't know.
So, the zoning designation does follow the land. It is not permanent. You can always have, have map amendments. You do that occasionally to say, we want to change this portion of R12 to something else, or vice versa. So, it's, it does run with the land, and so, if, if you zone as they've requested, then those, the three sections, those are considered separate parcels and are zoned according to what you would ultimately decide. Did that answer your question?
So, councilman Wood, so basically, for example, there's C2 zoning for commercial district. Once it was zoned C2, then anything of that C2 fitting commercial district could go in there, whether or not they have a specific building listed or not, when it comes in there, then that, if it's zoned for C2, and that's what you have, as a council, have approved and authorized in there, then anything fitting that category could go in there versus a conditional zoning district, then it would be stipulated on what that would be, so.
Any other questions for the council?
Would you consider withdrawing this and coming back with much less so that it would not eat up 99-point-something percent of our annexation area?
So, yeah, yes, yes, I'd consider that, yeah. I think, and I think you're asking what I was proposing earlier, which is that we could scale it down.
Yeah, I mean, I guess I'm saying, I don't, I don't see possible way for this. I mean, but, you know, I'm not the only one here, there's seven. I'm just wondering if you would consider, because, you know, putting all of our eggs in one basket and knowing that we don't have a million dollars of extra tax coming in puts it in a real hot spot for us. It's the rock in the hard place.
Sure.
I think it's also significant that by the time this comes up for a vote, half of this council will be different.
That's true.
I mean, it won't be, it won't be four of us. It'll be four new people.
Sure. Can I ask a question about that? So, there were, there were two considerations. One was the annexation, the other was the water. Do they have to be paired, or can the water be considered separately? How does that work?
Yes, I believe it's, am I correct? Yes, there's separate applications.
Sure, okay. Do I have to give a definitive answer? I mean, my thought is, yes.
No, you can just think of that.
James, it might be helpful for folks, too, if you would describe the processes would go through. First, we'd have a public hearing on the zone... First, we'd have a public hearing on the zoning, then when it got to go to the planning board, could you describe the process, and so everyone has an idea of what's involved?
So the first thing that comes to mind is our friends on the planning board have already done their homework on this issue, and have issued a favorable recommendation on the zoning map that you have included in your packet. The next step in this process inevitably will be, no matter what date it's chosen, a public hearing. The governing board, what iteration of the governing board may be at that time, cannot act on this item until those public hearings are held. That'll be both for the annexation and for the zoning of the properties.
So if there was to change to the existing application, such as they divided up the property for different zoning, or they went for a conditional zoning district, or, then that would require yet another visit to the planning board, is that correct?
If we went conditional zoning, it would go, would have to go back to the planning board. If there was an intensification of the zoning requested, that also would have to go back to the planning board.
So the planning board's approval, if you will, is based solely on what we receive, the application that exists right now?
And the zoning.
And the zoning, correct.
But the planning board doesn't make recommendations as to whether or not we should annex. They, they make recommendations as to whether or not this is a fit zoning classification.
So the specific job of the planning board in this regard is to make a statement to town council, which they have, and it's included in your packet, as to whether or not the project is consistent with your comprehensive land use plan. They relied pretty heavily on the resolution concerning growth areas, which called out all of these uses that are being proposed, or would be permitted should the zoning be ascribed to the property as has been requested. All of those were specifically enumerated in, in your growth area resolution. Secondly, what the planning board must find is that the rezoning, or in this case, the initial zoning is reasonable, and there are five factors that go into that, that I must admit I don't have memorized. But the, the recommendation was unanimous to both of those regards.
And if the town chooses to not annex, but would allow for water, then it stays with county zoning, and we don't make decisions on zoning anyway, correct?
That is correct. There exists a possibility that the property owner, in this case, representative of the property owner, could go to Buckham County and seek development approval. There have been a few statements regarding advice that our applicant has received. Perhaps some of the reason that that advice was relayed in that manner is since 2017, almost every single development application that was requesting town water from outside of our municipal borders, town council also requested voluntary annexation petition. And that is eight years of information based upon previous action of this governing board that was relayed to this particular applicant.
But none of them ever took 99.9% of all of our?
This one does have some unique complications. Grant us all that, up to and including our satellite annexation percentage that, that has been touched on quite a bit so far.
I don't really have an issue with a public hearing regarding the zoning, letting the public speak. We're not making any decisions, we're listening.
That's right, we're listening.
Yeah, it, it seems very narrow scope. And it's not really the issue of zoning that I'm hearing over and over. Our heartburn is attributable to other issues.
Would you like to recommend some action, then?
Mr. Mayor, before I may, before you called a question on that, is just to clear up, Ms. Cordell's point is that if this did occur in the county, it would still be in the North Buckham Fire District, so fire would still be responding there regardless.
And we have obviously much less to say about what and how much gets applied there.
I mean, I'll make a motion for a public hearing.
So it's a motion to set a public hearing for the zoning, as, as existed in your packet tonight, for December ninth, and with the public speak to what they think about this, this zoning request? Let's do both. So is there any more, any more comments?
Are we doing annexation public hearing on the ninth as well, as zoning or just zoning?
You, I think we can do what we want. So there's two, there's two separate, there's two separate applications, correct? So you could do one or both, or?
I'm, I'm in favor of setting the zoning public hearing, but I'm not in favor of setting the annexation public hearing.
Could you amend your, your?
Sure.
So the amended, the amended motion is to set a public hearing for December ninth for zoning only. Any other questions or comments?
Yeah, it, just, just help me, just to help me understand what that, what you mean by that.
Well, I don't think, if, if we're being asked to have a public hearing on annexation issues, it seems to me that the public hasn't had the necessary opportunity to fully vet this project, because we don't even have a site plan, right? And that's what we seem to be saying. So I'm breaking into, into two.
Two, two separate, two separate days.
Two separate hearings.
I would, that's just me, that's what I would do.
So we're suggesting that they have, there's two separate applications, one for annexation, one for zoning, and there's two public hearings as well. And what Mr. McGuire is suggesting is we set the public hearing for the zoning only, but not the separate annexation, because he feels that there's not enough information yet to make it into a?
I think it's premature.
I agree.
Jennifer, do you have something?
I'm, I'm happy to, happy to give you, I'm happy to sit down, but I'm also happy to offer just a couple, a couple more thoughts on, on that. One is the zoning doesn't matter unless you're going to annex.
That's true.
And, and the, the, the public hearing on the annexation actually is, is really meant to hear from your current, your current residents, your current Weaverville residents on whether they wish to take it in. That's typically what the public, public hearing on the annexation piece is. The zoning piece is a little broader, because that's, it's the zoning piece that starts giving some color to what, what possible uses could be on there.
So I think it kind of matches your ideas.
Can I ask a clear question?
Yes.
Sorry. It's just on the, the point about reducing the, the request. So i- in that event, if we withdraw what's in front of you now, then that, that's how it would happen. That would just be withdrawn, and there would, this would be moot. There would, there wouldn't be a discussion in December, and then we would just resubmit a new application.
That, that's correct, that's my understanding, is that, is that correct?
I think if it's, I think the planning board's approval recommendation still stands if there's a, we talk about zoning or annexation?
The annexation, the question, would we, would we pair down the annexation?
Don't sit down again, Jennifer.
So my thought on that is you've got a zoning map with three, three different zones on it. If the scaling back of it is to strip out, say, the R3, so we're not going to do the R3, we're going to just do the R12 and C, I think you could go forward, because you've already got a, a planning board recommendation on that, if it's the, if it's the, the boundaries that y'all had currently proposed. Now, if the lines are going to change again, or if there's a big reconfiguration, then I do think it would need to go back to, back, back down to the planning board.
That's my understanding as well. If we reduce what we're asking, we don't need to go back to the planning board. Obviously, if we change the lines or increase the intensity, we'll have to go back. I don't think that's what we're discussing. We're discussing scaling impacts, and in that case, it would be the issue to go ahead and have a public hearing. We go, we'll have time to do that, but now that's what ends up happening.
Now, the comments we heard, and public comments, were more about grading, or about water, were about some of those kind of issues that don't affect the zoning. They affect the annexation. I mean, they, they affect, you know, what, what's going to go on in the piece of property.
And you're talking about that, the sewer and the right-of-way, okay.
The grading, the water table, the?
Yeah.
Yeah, those things.
Right, so I, I mentioned what the feedback I've got on the, the water table and the wells, and how we would, would address that. The, I have to say that what was said about the eminent domain, and I believe Mr. McCurry, that he was told that by MSE, that was the first I've ever heard the words eminent domain, right, is, and relates to any of this. My, my understanding about it is there is existing right-of-way that goes from that, you know, from Clark Chapel all the way to the nearest sewer, and that those kinds of things are not, I don't know. That's, I have to check with MSE on that, but that's the first anyone's ever said something about.
So, my question. Well, as peoples come from level, right now there is a motion on, on the table to have, set the public hearing for annexation and zoning, of course. So Jennifer makes a good point that one kind of requires the other, for December nine. How are people feeling?
Two on December ninth. The zoning on December ninth, and the annexation on December ninth.
Right, because Jennifer makes a good point, you know, there's not a zoning discussion to be had if we don't have.
And, and so you're thinking, you're saying that when we think about annexation, that's for the people of the town who pay the current taxes, to come and say yes or no, because they're going to have to pay a lot more taxes if we annex a huge property that doesn't bring in much taxes, and may not bring any for years to come. And then we lose all of our opportunity if future subdivisions want to come in our growth areas that would be bringing in taxes, they will still be built, we will still let them have water, but they will pay Buckham County taxes only. I mean, if it, I'm not going to be here after December, you know, it'll be a whole new council, a bunch of us won't be here. But to me, it seems like it's rushing it, and we don't have enough information. We, my, my snow globe's just, you know, got all kinds of stuff in it, and it's not falling out and feeling good. I mean, yes, it, it is the proper zoning, yes. Should it be annexed, is it good for the town, how will we pay for it? Those are all the things, and how many units are actually going to be there?
I have just cognizance of the fact that there is generally one public hearing on a question. We're not going to have three, we're not going to have four, we're not going to have people who want to come back and voice it four months from now, because something else developed. It might happen that way, if lines get changed, or plans get changed. But I used the phrase, or the word premature earlier, I'm going to say that. I don't feel comfortable with this.
Is that the feeling of council in general?
Feelings, we're rushing.
Do you want to withdraw your motion?
Yes, I'll, I'll withdraw.
So, let me see if I'm voicing the council's concerns correctly. We think the LGG is a good partner with us, we simply are not feeling comfortable with setting a public hearing and, and making decisions on annexation and zoning until we have more specific information with regard to what's being annexed, what, if you would consider conditional zoning, or, and how many units you're talking about, et cetera. Is that, is that accurate, folks, am I voicing your opinions correctly?
And look at the acreage.
And, yes.
Sure.
What question did you have?
Well, nothing, I'll just, we'll endeavor to get all that information to you as quickly as we can get it in our hands.
I think that would, I think that would make people feel a lot more comfortable if we had, if we just had some more specificity about the project. I don't think, I don't think that people are against the project, or people are just saying we don't exactly know what the hell the project is at this point.
Yeah, understood. Okay, thank you all.
Thank you. Uh, let's see, folks, next item up is anticipated vacancy on town council. So as you know, on December 15th, we'll be swearing in folks who have won in the recent election, and they will get to deal with this probably. So, so congratulations, guys. But that, with council member Lawrence, assuming the mayor's position on December 15th, that means there will be a vacancy left in his, for his unexpired term of the next two years as a council member. The county town council have, have an opportunity to either replace that or not, if they, if they choose to do. But if folks are interested in applying for that vacancy, there is an application that is, can be either gotten from the website or from the office here, and people who are interested need to fill out an application and submit that by December the 8th. And those, as those applications become available, they will be sent to all council members who will be voting on that, on that, on that issue, which could be on December 15th. At that point, council could either make a motion and make, make a decision, or they could do something else. For example, they could set up interviews with those people who've applied, or set aside a, a, a separate committee to review them, whichever that, that new council decides to do. But I just want to make sure that people knew what that process was, and what would happen with that position. So it's up to, it's basically up to the new council what they do. They could choose to do nothing, let's say empty, or they could choose to appoint someone to fill that term. Are there any questions or concerns about this? Great, so next up is our quarterly report from fire, and interim fire chief Ron Davis, you might remember him from a different capacity. But he's with Weaverville again, and right now he's our interim fire chief. Welcome back, Mr. Davis.
Chief Davis.
Good evening, and thank you. A little odd to be here, I got to admit, back in this capacity too. But whenever the manager contacted me, my first instinct was, how can I help? So here I am, it's great to see everybody. And I'll get into the report here, it might be, the format might be just a little bit different than what you're used to in the past. So I think we'll start off with the fire marshal's report. The fire marshal conducted a total of nine events. There were 640 kids in those events, and 19 adults, and he has been a little bit busy with these educational classes and prevention. He had a total of 77 inspections in 90 days, and I don't know if anybody knows the complexity of some of those commercial structures that he has to inspect, but they can be quite involved and quite detailed. Well, 90 days, of course, there's, we, less than 60 days, he had to conduct 77 total inspections on that. So he's been a little busy in his area. The major incident types, this is, again, something that you're probably used to seeing from prior reports. I'm not sure what questions you might have, but I will point out, we're talking about our activities going up. I'm a little bit of a numbers geek, if you remember correctly, with some of the stuff I've bombarded council with before. Those numbers were actually going up, they're at 601 total incidents in this quarter, and that's up 7% from the previous quarter. Next, we have the fire loss. This fire loss is actually pretty ugly. I'm sure you're aware of, one of those fire losses was the, actually, apparatus itself. As you can, I don't have a picture of that, but it's a little bit hard to stop a fire once one is started into a, to a vehicle, and it gets rather involved with the subsystems and things like that. So the fire truck, and there was one home that was involved in a fire. That fire was, it was a late call, in other words, it came in late, so which means that the fire was actually almost fully involved when the firefighters were called there, which, again, makes it problematic for any type of substantial save of dollars. And that's why if you see the discrepancy from the 703 to 704, that was only a total save this time of $1,300 out of those two major losses. So it's, it's pretty insignificant.
So tell us how your discussion with the insurance folks are going with regard to our truck. Did you get the check yet?
That is, that is a complex issue, and the manager sent me an email on that today, as well as Tanya. It's, it's moving forward, but at a snail's pace, is, if I'm correct.
We have been notified that a truck will be totaled out, but they are not throughputting all the numbers and facts and figures together yet. But they said it is going to reach that threshold, so they haven't given us the official report.
Considering the time that it takes to order a truck, I mean, we've already been experiencing this with the order that we've already got in. What, are we waiting two years now for it? It takes about two years to get a truck, right?
Yes, sir, about four, I mean, we've, that other one was ordered, and the first engine was ordered July of, what, '23, and they still haven't started construction on it yet.
So should we have to do that again, and were you just down a truck for the next?
There are some other options out there, whether you're going to, you buy used, or you buy something that somebody had planned to purchase, and purchasing fell through, or a stock truck that has come off, that it won't have the specs. One of the things we look at in this terrain is what we consider crab angle, especially trying to turn up some of these driveways, so it may not, being a stock truck, it may not coincide with some of the angle departures we would have on a, on a spec-ed out apparatus. So that's one of the reasons when you build it from scratch is you, you look at it from how your terrain impacts those, that design feature.
So I could, you know, I know, I think it's common when your, when your vehicle gets totaled, you get the insurance check. It doesn't really replace the, the.
Correct.
And I suspect that's probably the case here, isn't it, right?
Uh, that is, uh, I suspect that is going to be the case, but we're also going to, moving forward, look at, um, talks with our insurance provider on changing the way we do business on that aspect. For example, they had, uh, what is agreed upon cost. If we tell them that the engine is one point two million dollars to replace it, um, then that's what they will factor in moving forward. And for example, if it comes back to be one million, then they still give us one point two. If it comes back to be one point five to replace it, then we still get one point two.
But that'll be for the future, not?
Correct, yeah, not for this one. So as we're learning and navigating this, we're looking at options of how to better fund, especially with the price of apparatus in that department. We wouldn't do that townwide, but in that department where you're looking at million dollar replacement apparatus, we're looking at that.
We could probably buy a lot of quick response vehicles though with that. Sorry, Mr.
No, that's, uh, that's okay. My understanding also to, uh, answer your question just a little bit more, it, uh, we're looking at roughly eighteen months from now. Should they start to build? Is that correct? Uh, something like that. It's going to be a little while longer. And in the meantime, let's hope our other, uh, engine holds together as, as well. Yes. All right, um, uh, the incident count per zone, I know that, uh, this varies a little bit from area to area. Like, uh, last quarter, uh, it, there was actually more calls within the town than there was outside of the town. This has flipped a little bit, but not much. There's, uh, not really a whole lot, um, to go over other than that. It's, uh, those normals, those numbers are pretty normal. And the next slide, the last slide I have for you is the average response time. That average response time increased by thirty-eight seconds from the previous, uh, quarter. And there are one hundred and thirty-five overlapping calls for service, which is a thirty-two percent increase in one quarter alone. I know that, uh, you've, uh, had that whenever there's vehicles who are, or whenever there's firefighters and out on other calls, they obviously can't go to, uh, that pending call. So that increased thirty-two percent. So, uh, everybody, to include the fire marshal, is busy. Um, that shows no signs of abating. Are there any questions you might have?
Any questions to the chief? Thank you, sir. Nice to see you again.
Yes, thank you.
Um, next is our quarterly report from the police and, uh, Chief Oberlin. And I got to say, I just got to say, this morning I went to the coffee shop and I guess I dropped my wallet and Chief Oberlin came to the rescue and brought her, retrieved my wallet. So thank you, ma'am.
You're welcome. Thank heavens your ID's in there and we recognize you. So, good evening, neighbors. Future council, council. We'll just get started. You've had some time to look over it then. The quarterly report, looks like calls for service are staying pretty consistent there. If we want to move on to the next photograph there, I did want to take a moment to point out that our accidents had a big jump on the next screen with, um, going from about twenty-three a month to fifty-seven. So fun fact on that, only two, twenty-two of those were reportable. We pulled some information on that. Fourteen of them were hit and runs with property damage. One was on Main Street where someone opened their door into traffic and all the rest were in parking lots. Thirty-five motor vehicle, um, accidents. One on North Main where a large truck flipped a mirror, one at the laundromat from someone who made a mistake in backing, one on Alabama when someone made a mistake leaving a parking lot or a parking spot. One at North Main Street when a vehicle failed to yield right of way. So that's four, five, right? And the rest of them were on the boulevard and commercial areas of all of those. Three of them had personal injury of those wrecks. So, little, little bit there. Training and professional development. You've had some time to read over those. If you have any questions about those, I'm open to it. But some, uh, just one moment with the bike team leader completing, uh, police bike maintenance training. That means that all of our stuff can happen in-house. And OSHA strangely does ask for records for even things down to bicycles. So that will help us make sure to maintain the new bikes, including the new bike. Activities of interest. We put Chief Harris on there. He helped us with not just the first day in school, but the first week of school. So I asked one of the officers to do a drive-by snapshot. That's what you got in there. And you can see some of the other extra activities we've done along the way. We also, on the next one, had a vehicle totaled on the interstate. Um, that, we have gotten the money back from that and we are looking to buy a used vehicle. So if I had to put a silver lining on that, that vehicle had over a hundred thousand miles on it. So I guess if we were going to pick one that had to be totaled. Yeah, it was not on purpose, but, uh, if we had to pick one. And so we are looking, but mostly for used vehicles. So we took that vehicle to a company that stripped all of our, uh, police equipment out of it. It's already being repurposed into the builds for this year. And we're looking for something, um, that's still hybrid, that's meeting all of the qualifications of what we need. Some options already have police equipment in them, some don't. We haven't found the right fit quite yet. We'll keep looking. Um, and then we did do a checkpoint. That was on the bottom of the page. We've had some time to look over that. The traffic team addressed some issues because you may remember, but we've had a lot of speeding issues, thirty-five mile an hour zone there with people coming through at sixty or seventy. So they chose that location and had some success. That is a two-hour checkpoint when they do that on Merriman. So those are pretty significant numbers for two hours. And then.
What is Senate Bill three hundred?
What's that?
What is Senate Bill three hundreds?
Well, that's what I'm going to touch on.
All right.
So why do you do that? That, uh, we, we got some questions about why there might be more than one officer on a call and even, um, a, a little question about was that some way the officers might be trying to intimidate people? And that is not, uh, something that we do. So if we have an officer in training, you're going to see that quite a bit. I have a, uh, the L E T student about to graduate in December. We have a sixteen-week field training program. So he'll be in a car with someone for quite a while. Language barriers, we'll send a second officer out. Officer Rodriguez is Spanish speaking. He helps a lot of our surrounding agencies to go out if we have language barriers. Specialty skills needed. So if we have someone that's specially trained in crash-related incidents, if we are going to domestic violence and we have someone that's specially trained in domestic violence, we have crisis negotiators, drug recognition officers, D W I officers, things like that. Multiple suspects, obviously, if we're going to do a vehicle search or something, you don't want to have your head in the car and turn around and your suspects are nowhere to be found when they, they run off. So it's helpful to have somebody watch you, watch for you. The potential for danger can be anything from being on a traffic stop where there's a dense population and a lot of people can be involved and a lot of moving parts to the nature of the call or high traffic or if there's going to be further investigation needed. But Senate Bill three hundred is a bill that became effective December first, twenty twenty-one and focused on early intervention mechanisms to correct officer misconduct and to provide warning systems to track or improve officer performance. Part of that is duty to intervene. So we are obligated as officers to intervene if we witness another officer using any kind of excessive force. With that being said, you actually have to be present to intervene. So we do have supervisors that regularly check in on their officers to, uh, check the temperature of the call and make sure that everything's going well. With a lot of new officers that we've had, so with Chief Davis retiring and me moving up, that brought a new officer in, things like that. You asked me not to snipe officers from other agencies, so I didn't, but that means I have a twenty-year-old officer who needs some supervision, both for life experience and police experience, right? So they, they will likely have someone looking over them to make sure that they're being proverbially raised well. Right, from baby officers into grown officers. Do you have questions?
Any questions to the chief? Thank you, chief. Appreciate that.
Thank you.
Next report is from the community center and we have our community center manager, Michael DiSario.
Thank you, mayor and town council. Try to end this on a little bit of sunshine. So this quarterly report, um, were given in November, of course, but it spans from July through September, which is crazy to look back at that. Uh, first, I'll go ahead and start with the private rentals. So you'll see our new pricing that we've introduced. And basically it sorts out a little bit lower than what we've seen in the past. But fifty-six percent of, of our usage is by residents now. And then this quarter, it's, um, forty-four percent by non-residents. So that total revenue is around ninety-four hundred. Speaking about the facility itself, next up are just some updates. Uh, good news, no vehicles were totaled, nothing. Thank God. Knocking on wood over here.
We appreciate that.
That's right. But we are seeing some normal wear and tear in the building. So paint chipping, that sort of stuff that needs to be fixed. The automatic doors, which, uh, happen to be pretty expensive, um, have been repaired a couple of times. A V equipment, um, we thought it might need to be updated, but it looks like it's in good shape. So I had routine maintenance done and then there's been some interior repairs done in Albert Weaver. So next up, our community programs. Uh, nothing too new there with our community programs. They're still going strong. Over thirty different programs, all run by volunteers, um, who are happy to be there and we love to see that and we love to support them. Uh, just to highlight some community events that have happened. Uh, there's been several storytelling events, one by Nancy Pheasant, um, another local group and Other Words, and then a conglomeration of storytellers called The Time of Our Lives. Next is the celebration of a hundred and fifty years. Um, and then, of course, our music in the park, um, which was the Chris Rosser, uh, Rudy's, Bluegrass Review, and then Queen Bee and the Honey Lovers, which everybody seemed to really love that last event. So that was lovely. Um, some more town events. Can you believe it? The fourth of July, I'm just now highlighting that, but that was wonderful. Um, it went really well. Um, a good amount of food trucks were there. Everything seems to go pretty smooth, um, on our end. Breakfast for Dinner, um, is the band that was featured there. They did really well and we got great feedback. Some other events is the nine eleven observance and then the Haleen Recovery and Resilience, um, event that we put on. Uh, next, uh, just our, over the summer, since, uh, summer ended, our Family Fridays was the program that we introduced. That concluded as well and that Family Fridays featured storytime, toddler time, arts and crafts in the afternoon, movie nights in the evenings and cooking classes as well. And then we have some pickleball updates. The town is providing quieter pickleball supplies. So, um, at no cost, uh, there's, uh, more balls that are up there and, um, whatever receptacle that you have, uh, they're quieter, they're supposed to be quieter than typical pickleballs. And we also feature paddle covers that if people need or want those, we have those available for them. Our pickleball hours also shifted, um, in October from eight AM, um, eight AM to eight PM two, or from eight AM to eight PM to eight AM to six PM, which it is now. And then lastly, I know this has happened this last month, which technically, or sorry, technically not in the quarter, but I wanted to mention because I highlighted it last, um, quarterly report, um, about honoring our volunteers over the month of October. So we didn't know exactly what we wanted to do, but we ended up basically, um, getting a really nice card, writing a hand, um, handwritten card to them. And then on the volunteers that had the larger classes, we actually went into the class and publicly thanked our volunteer, had their class clap for them, handed them the card. So, um, hopefully they felt really warm. We got a lot of feedback about that because we appreciate what the volunteers do and the lovely work that they allow us to do. I think that's it. Any questions?
Any questions? Thank you, sir. Thanks for saving, saving us some money. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Is there anything else to cover for this board this evening, gentlemen and ladies? If not, we're adjourned.